I would like to call to order the August 19th, 2019 Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners regular meeting. Welcome everyone. It's good to have such a big crowd in the audience tonight. If you would please stand and join me with the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We are very pleased to have with us tonight Pastor Tony Bradshaw from St. James Lutheran Church for our invocation. Welcome.
Thank you, sir. Let us pray. Gracious and holy God, we give you thanks for this day, and we pray for your blessings on this evening's meeting, and your blessings for this Board of Commissioners and their families, and for all public servants in this city and county and state, that they may do their work in a spirit of wisdom and charity and justice. Help them use their authority to serve faithfully and to promote our common life, and give this community grace to live together in unity and peace through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Reverend Bradshaw. We appreciate you being with us tonight. First up on our agenda is the approval or correction of the meetings, which you all have copies before you. Do I hear a motion to approve or correct?
I make the motion to approve as presented.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. We would like to also welcome Tisha Abdul. Did I pronounce that correctly? Tisha is our youth commissioner, and we're pleased to have you with us tonight. Next item is approval of the agenda, which you also have a copy before you. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented, including the changes on page 78?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes as well. And we move now to recognitions and presentations. We are pleased to have Diane Gridley with us for a Child Support Awareness Month proclamation. Welcome.
Good evening. First, I'd like to take a moment to thank you for allowing me time on the agenda today. It is my privilege to read the proclamation for Child Support Awareness Month and just take a minute to highlight the child support program. Susan Dillon and her staff do a tremendous job each and every day, and the children of the county are the beneficiaries of that work that they do. Their dedication to establishing and enforcing child support is second to none. I'd also like to mention those individuals who support the efforts of the department, and that would be our judges, the district attorneys, sheriff's personnel, and clerk of court. It's truly a team effort, and successful collaboration is evident, as Cabarrus County is one of the top performing counties in the state. So the proclamation reads as follows. Child Support Awareness Month in Cabarrus County, a proclamation, whereas children are entitled to financial support from their parents in Cabarrus County continues to improve its effort at child support collections, and whereas in state fiscal year 2019, over $12 million in child support was collected from parents of children in Cabarrus County, and whereas there are nearly 5,800 active child support cases in Cabarrus County working to ensure that approximately 5,900 children receive financial support from their parents, and whereas children who do not receive adequate financial and emotional support from both parents may experience greater difficulty in becoming healthy, happy, and productive citizens, and whereas many concerned and dedicated judges, district attorneys, clerk of court, sheriff's personnel, and child support professionals work to establish and enforce child support order for Cabarrus County's children, one of our state's most vital resources. Now therefore be it resolved that the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the month of August as Child Support Awareness Month in Cabarrus County, this the 19th day of August 2019.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you Diane, and thank you for what you and all your staff do for the children in our county, as well as all those other folks that you recognize that make it work. So at this time, do I hear a motion that we approve the proclamation as presented?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And that motion passes. And we move now to communications and outreach, and Jonathan Marshall will make that presentation.
And I thought I was gonna have to hesitate while David and Jared got down the hall, since they're usually down in the control room. Our communications and outreach department was among 28 North Carolina governments to earn recognition at the 12th North Carolina City-County Communicators Excellence in Communication Awards, NC3C. They challenge you with that name. It won first place in the best PEG streaming government channel, which ironically is exactly where people are viewing this tonight, and is part of our major efforts towards transparency. And I think you'll see with these awards, that's been recognized. But they also won five second-place awards. So David is gonna come up and go through some of what those awards were for, and also bring up some of those people being recognized with these awards.
All right. Good evening. It's good to see you guys again. We have a number of awards here. Unfortunately, Kasha Thompson is the manager of the communications department, is not available tonight, and sickness has knocked out a couple. And then we have, of course, Jonathan sitting here doing our social media stuff. Hannah is in the control room switching, so we're kinda spread all over the place. But this is all group awards for this communications and outreach team. We got a second-place award for multi-platform campaign for the FY19 budget, so there's multiple levels of promotion of that. We also got a one-time special programming, a Life Saved, and that was in the Hearts and Heroes events that Cabarrus County EMS does every year. We also get a second-place and Best Videographer with Storylines: Gift of Life, which Commissioner Schu is familiar with. We also won, as Jonathan said, first place for the best public education and government television channel in the state, and we're really proud about that. We also won second-place instructional video, Successful Gardener with Lauren Hill, and Lauren unfortunately was ill today, so she couldn't be here. But she took over David Goforth. We've been doing the series for 15 years, and when he retired, Lauren stepped in, and she's done a great job. And then one of our most popular programs, we won second place in regular programming, which is our Historical Moments. And the one that got that award was early movie theaters in Cabarrus County. And what I'd like to do is bring up the writer and the host, which there would be no Historical Moments without Judge Clarence Horton. So Clarence, if you would step up, say a few words if you would.
Thank you. Appreciate this opportunity. I hadn't expected to be asked to say anything, but...
Surprise, surprise.
I wanted to express our appreciation for the wonderful support that we've had for now, well more than 10 years from this board. I appreciate that. I also appreciate the honor of being allowed to work with such great professionals in doing the program. So anything that we do well, it's because they do it, not me. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we've been, we have 25 historical documentaries that Clarence has written and hosted, all about Cabarrus County, and it's won national and state awards. And Jared's a big part of all this, and Jonathan, the whole communications team, and it's just a real honor, and we really appreciate all your support allows us to do this. But the most important thing is getting the information to the community. That is really our reward. And when we hear people come up to us and tell us how they saw something that helped them, or they know more about their county now than they ever did, and they know all the different services that are available, that's the important thing. The awards are great, but when people come up to tell you that, that's awesome. And I just want to put a plug, is we'll have our county booth and our Cabarrus County TV booth at the fair, and all kinds of cool stuff, so come by. We wanna invite everybody to come by and say hello, and give us some feedback, so. And as they say in the TV business, we're gonna do a little teaser, 'cause I kinda, in the back of my head, I have a feeling there might be some national awards coming very soon. So anyway, stay tuned, as they say. Thank you.
Congratulations. We don't have too many departments that have to bring in a cart to haul all their awards, so that certainly is impressive, and particularly that one award, the top government station in the state, is what I heard. So we certainly appreciate what all our communications folks do every day, and that has a lot to do with this board's efforts of communicating with citizens and letting folks know what's going on and what actions we're taking. So it's a great team, and we certainly appreciate what they do. There was one item that I, under recognitions and presentations, I wanted to mention. I have a beautiful plaque here. At the top, it says Axe Handles, and it's presented to the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners. Thank you for your dedication and commitment to the first 103rd Field Artillery Team, and this was presented to us yesterday. They had their deployment ceremony at the Cabarrus Arena and Convention Center. I think there were about, Commissioner Schu and I attended, and I think, I would say in excess of 2,500 people...
I would say so.
...in attendance out there yesterday. But these are the National Guard troops from, based here in Cabarrus County, but from other areas as well, but they are deploying to the Middle East in support of Operation Spartan Shield. There are about 600 of them that will be, I think, in Kuwait. And so we certainly wish them well, and appreciate their service to our country, and certainly appreciate the recognition of the nice plaque that they presented to us yesterday. And now we move to informal public comments. And the first card that I have, and if you would, you have three minutes to speak, and if you would, come to the microphone and state your name and address. And the first card is Nancy Fries Faggart.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board members. I'm Nancy Fries Faggart. I live at 139 Palisade Drive in Concord. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I am so thankful that Beverly Hills Elementary School is remaining open and is back in the 10-year plan. Our county needs the seats. Community schools are good investments. They make our city and our county a desirable place to live. I am grateful to you for appropriating the money for the third-party independent site study. I'm even more thrilled it is economically feasible to build on not one, but two sites on the property, and I look forward to the groundbreaking one day in the near future, and I promise to be a good neighbor. So many people made the intentional choice to move into the Beverly Hills Elementary School District for the express purpose of wanting their children to attend a small community school. People from all over the United States have chosen to live in this area because of that freedom, to choose a smaller elementary school. It is the best choice for some children, and parents know what is best for their child. More importantly, many young people have moved back to the Beverly Hills community. They desired what they experienced growing up for their young children. Excellent schools and quality lifestyle is a big drawing card for our county. There was lots of energy at last week's Board of Education meeting. Elected officials listened to what the people desired and voted unanimously to support us. Our community is committed. We care about schools, children, teachers, and parents, and we are grateful that the Board of Education voted seven to zero to put us back in the capital plan. Diverse options in school sizes in Cabarrus County is a real plus for our county. Some children do extremely well in the larger schools, where they have more choices and friends, extracurricular activities, et cetera. Others thrive at smaller schools. At any rate, harness our energy. Let us be part of the National Neighborhood School Movement. Study the research on smaller elementary schools. Citizens in the communities of Arbrown McAllister, Coltrane Webb, and Beverly Hills Elementary Schools desire the largest small schools possible. Bottom line, we can't afford not to invest in our children. The ripple effect will reap many rewards. The pendulum is swinging. Let's be part of the movement. I ask for your approval in the coming years, and promise to help achieve the goal of keeping the options available in our county. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is James Fulton.
Good evening. My name is Jim Fulton. I live at 224 Ingleside Drive here in Concord. Good evening, Chairman Morris, Manager Downs, members of the board. At their last meeting, the Board of Education embraced the passionate outpouring of public support for Beverly Hills Elementary School, and voted not only to keep the school open, but also to add a replacement school to the capital plan. I'd like to thank Commissioner Keiger for his interest in attendance at the meeting, and to thank the other commissioners who support our small community schools. I invite the Board of Commissioners to also embrace the support, the community that so tirelessly advocated for their school, and approve the funding request for this project, so the future of Beverly Hills will be secure, and so the educational choice embodied by it will be preserved for generations of students to come. While I am thrilled that Beverly Hills will remain open, and that the replacement schools for Coltrane Webb and McAllister Elementary are also on the capital plan, I have some reservations about the size of the schools being proposed for the McAllister and Coltrane Webb sites, and the lack of community involvement in the process to determine how large those schools should be. Whatever contention and discord occurred in the struggle to keep Beverly Hills open could have been avoided had the superintendent engaged the community in a meaningful way earlier in the process, and I'm hoping that the Board of Education will avoid making the same mistake with the changes proposed for our other small community schools. I encourage the commissioners to fund replacements for our community schools, but also to assure that the Board of Education avails itself of the community resources and support to make certain that projects they are proposing enjoy the full support of the communities they are intended to serve. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Keith Arbuckle.
My name is Keith Arbuckle. I live at 1632 Redbird Circle, Concord, North Carolina, and I wanna thank you all for the opportunity to come in front of you all and present my ideas to you. I enlisted in the Navy. I served with the United States Marine Corps and retired Air Force. I'm also a retired healthcare administrator, having worked in the field of trauma and cardio-pulmonary, so I'm very familiar with injuries and accidents and trauma. The reason I've come here is, for the last 13 years, I've ridden with the Patriot Guard Riders to honor our fallen soldiers, veterans, public service officers who die in the line of duty, as long as we're invited by the family to show our honor and respect. Over the years, it's become more and more of a problem. We have enough issues dealing with vehicles and stuff out on the highways that don't pay any attention to motorcycles, and I wanna take this opportunity to extend a sincere thanks to the Cabarrus County Sheriff's Department and the Concord City Police. They have escorted us many, many times to make our escorts much safer, that we all get to go home to our families. I lost a dear friend several years ago after a mission was hit and killed. Some of the issues that we're dealing with is safety out on the road, and I know I was at the deployment ceremony yesterday, where I met a couple of you there, and lo and behold, leaving the Cabarrus Arena, coming down Old Airport, come around a curve, and somebody had mowed their yard and blown grass out into the street, out into Old Airport Road. If this is damp, and especially like we had the rain just a little bit ago, when you're on a motorcycle and you go around a curve and you see a bunch of grass blown out into the road, if it's damp, it is just like ice. We've had several injuries over the years from motorcycles that hit grass and debris blown out into the streets and the freeways, highways, and more and more counties are coming up and creating an ordinance that prohibits the blowing of trash, debris, and grass out in the streets because of the hazard and everything. And I know Mr. Schu explained to me, he was on his way here tonight, and lo and behold, there was somebody mowing some grass and blowing it all out into the street and everything. So it becomes a true hazard, and I know I wanna go home to my family in the evenings, and I know that when we're standing with these fallen heroes that have given their life to serve our country and promote our freedom and everything, I think we owe it to them and the Patriot Guard that we make everything as safe as we can. So what I would recommend is that we take a look at other counties and see what kind of ordinance they have prohibiting this, and make it a law. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bishop Roland Jordan.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board, Citizen. I greet in Jesus' name. First, I want to let you know that I have a Christian march that'll be Saturday 10, starting at Caldwell Park, going through the city of Concord, show our support for Jesus Christ. My main concern up here tonight is my older people. I experienced a fire燄s. I had a mother church 99-years-old. Even the doctor, I had to be a doctor Satan telling lies how much she was crazy, wasn't in her right mind. But we had to go through some procedures about five, about three months, and we finally got it straightened. So let's look out for our elder people. You know, when the parents come back and tell you something wrong, check it out. Make sure, you know. She even had to go talk to the judge. Judge said, "What's nothing wrong with that lady?" Praise God. Because God said, "Give you a sound mind, love and power." Second Timothy 7th verse. So let's take heed to that. I'm very concerned about that. I'm concerned about our kids. Thank you have that award, proclamation for our kids, so that's a blessing. I know my people, I say black people, have problems getting jobs, taking care of their kids. Instead of you locking them up, let's see if you can find a family to help them get a job there, take care of their kids. Let's give them a chance in doing that. You know, I think that'd be a blessing for us all, instead of just locking them up in the jail. And I thank God, I thank Dr. King, be glad he got the youth commissioner, might be the first black youth commissioner, so that's a blessing. Not only Dr. King, I am proud, and I know Jesus Christ is proud. To bring races to gatherness, you know, that's what we got to have. Like I always say, we go to our schools, you know, forced us to go sorta, 'cause we had Logan School. But show that you love towards us, as Jesus said, "Love towards one another." That's what I'm understanding today, Susan Wright, to help our people. I see you to help Barbara Scotia. Barbara Scotia got a swimming pool in there, and our schools can use that, help teach our, learn, where our kids can learn how to swim. Very important, because we do have black and white people drowning, you know, and that'd be a good place for them if you can help out. But anything you can do for Barbara Scotia, please do, and we thank you for supporting our community. God bless you.
Thank you. That's all of the yellow cards that have been turned in tonight. So we will move now to our consent agenda, which you all have a copy before you. Our consent agenda includes items that we've already discussed at length at our work session earlier in the month. So do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move to new business. First up, we have from the Sheriff's Office, award of a service weapon, and we are delighted to have Sheriff Van Shaw and Chief James Bailey with us, and I think there may be one order of business that we need to conduct before you do your part, if I...
We can sit back there.
...understand correctly. And the request, but you're, I didn't mean you had to sit down. I'm just trying to keep it in, trying to keep it in order, and I think that at this time, I would entertain a motion to declare a service weapon surplus property and authorize disposition in accordance with the county's policy.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we turn the floor back over to you. I'm sorry.
It's official now.
Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to come up this evening. I'm proud to bring before you Deputy Dave Moose. Dave has the distinction of being able to retire at the end of this month, and so we're very excited about that. Anytime a law enforcement officer has the opportunity to retire, it's a good thing. So as is customary in law enforcement all across North Carolina, as well as our office and the Board of Commissioners, we honor that officer by also retiring their gun and badge, so they all get to go home together, because they've served very bravely together and been an important part of this community. To tell you a little bit about Dave, Dave joined the Sheriff's Office in 1998. He served under Robert Kennedy, Sheriff Robert Kennedy. He also served under Sheriff Brad Riley, and then he had the last honor of serving under Sheriff Shaw. So, but in his 21-year career, Dave started out in the Communications Division. He moved to the Animal Control Division. Then he also served 10 years as a school resource officer in our public schools, which we know how important that is. And then finally, Dave was assigned to our new governmental security division and served out his final days with that division as well. So we also wanna take an opportunity to recognize his wife Thelma, if you will, stand up for us, Thelma, and his daughter Randy, who are here tonight with him, and also his brother Saul, and his wife and son as well are here to be with him tonight. So it's my honor, would you all like to step up? To award Deputy Dave Moose his service weapon and badge for his loyal and dedicated service to the citizens of Cabarrus County. There you go, Dave. Congratulations.
(applause) (inaudible) get a picture, he was trying, but I'll turn him around for you. How about that? So on behalf of the Commissioners, I just wanna take this opportunity to thank you from all of us for your service to this community, knowing the impact that you've made on our citizens, and have them from a safer perspective, and it sounds like you've covered the gambit of areas, and so you've just probably touched every citizen in this county with what you've done. So thank you so much for your 21 years. We wish you a very happy retirement, and like I say, you're always welcome to come back and see us, any money for a meeting that you'd like to drop me in. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
There's your box.
And I'll give Dave the opportunity, if you'd like to say something, Dave?
Well, I'll take the opportunity to say thanks, because it's a big, broad area that I've been able to serve in, and it's been my pleasure. I wish I could've done more, but that's, I think that's always something that you think of, but I thank you for the opportunity of being in a good place to work and to also live. I'm... But I thank you for the opportunity of being in a good place to work and to also live. Probably very fortunate in some areas, but I've actually been able to be born in this county, lived in this county, worked in this county, and now I'm retiring in this county. And so just thank you for a good board, and I've been through a few. So I can tell you, y'all are top-notch, and it's been a very good privilege to be in the school systems also. Thank you very much.
Great. Congratulations, Dave. We certainly wish you well in your retirement. It's always bittersweet when we see somebody, somebody go, but you've earned it, so we have to let go. So congratulations to you. Next up is we have an economic development investment project cylinder, and we are happy to have Samantha Grass to make that presentation, which will be followed by a public hearing.
Good evening. Samantha Grass, Recruitment Project Manager with Cabarrus Economic Development. Thank you for the opportunity to present the projects tonight. First one is Project Cylinder Personal Property. Trident Graphics N.A. LLC is considering to relocate their current location in the region to the International Business Park. The site address is 4495 Global Avenue Northwest, Concord. The company produces cylinders for the printing industry, and projected investment is estimated to be ten million in personal property. There are forty-five jobs associated with this project. Most of those jobs will be transfers from their current location. Their average wage is above our current county average wage. The Cabarrus County Grant Analysis is based on the estimated ten million projected investment. We are asking for your consideration of a three-year, eighty-five percent economic development grant. The estimated grant for the three-year term is one hundred eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars. The net revenue to the county during that grant term is thirty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Samantha? Okay, hearing none. We do have scheduled a public hearing on this, so at this time, I will open the public hearing and invite anyone to the podium that would like to speak on this project. Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. And what would be your pleasure on this request, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we approve the economic development agreement, which is three years, eighty-five percent between Project Cylinder for their personal property and to authorize the county manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the board, subject to review or revision by the county attorney.
Samantha, what's the proper name, the company name?
Yes, so Project Cylinder Real, I'm sorry, Personal Property is Trident Graphics N.A. LLC.
Okay, so in lieu of Project Cylinder, it's Trident?
Graphics.
Trident Graphics. And we had already previously, as the manager said, we have already discussed this in another meeting, so pretty much all the questions is answered. And anytime we can tend to get investment like this and they meet the minimum criteria, then we're always looking to help those people, because as I was talking earlier with Ms. Fries a little earlier, or Ms. Faggart, that society that we live in now is so much different when it comes to economic development, because if we don't get it, there's other counties, other states out there looking, saying, "Well, if they won't give you what you need to come, you come see us, and we'll give you this, and we'll give you that." And most of the time, it's pretty much the same thing that we do. Sometimes they'll sweeten the pot a little bit more, but we try to stay within reason, because we know that when the three-year or whatever the term ends, then the county will receive the full benefit of the taxation from then on. And then, of course, if you've got jobs, you know, that makes the pot a little bit sweeter for the county. So I hope that the motion that I made, Mr. Chairman, is suitable.
Okay, thank you, sir. Yes, we have a motion. Do I hear a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Okay, as Commissioner Schu mentioned earlier, this is a project that we have discussed over a period of time, and so we are happy to have the opportunity to address these decisions. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move now to item three, economic development investment for real property for Project Cylinder.
Thank you, and thank you for that support. So this is Project Cylinder Real Property. TKC two-hundred-seventy-eight LLC is proposing to build an eighty thousand square foot industrial building in the International Business Park. Site address is, again, is 4495 Global Avenue Northwest, Concord. The manufacturing facility would be leased to Trident Graphics N.A. LLC. The Cabarrus County Grant Analysis is based on an estimated seven point two to eight point five million projected investment in real property. We are, again, asking for your consideration of a three-year, eighty-five percent economic development grant. The estimated grant for the three-year term is between one hundred thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars to one hundred sixty thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars. Net revenue to the county during that grant term is over twenty-three thousand. Happy to answer any questions you have for Cylinder Real Property.
Okay, this will be the building that will be occupied by the company that we just discussed.
Correct.
And the correct name on that is TKC two-seven-eight LLC.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, any other questions for Samantha? Okay, what would be your pleasure on this one?
I want to make a motion to, oh, oh, forgot, yes.
I'm sorry. Yes, we do have a public hearing on this one as well, so we will now open the public hearing and invite anyone to the podium that would like to speak on this project. Okay, hearing no one, we'll close the public hearing. And now entertain a motion.
I'm calling for that again.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve an economic development agreement, three years, eighty-five percent between TKC two-seven-eight LLC and Cabarrus County, and to authorize county manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the board, subject to review or revision by the county attorney.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move now to item four, another economic development investment, and Samantha's back with us again.
Thank you again for that support, and thank you for the opportunity to present Project Wavy. Project Wavy, Carvana LLC, is considering opening inspection and recommissioning facility in Concord. Production includes an inspection and certification process and reconditioning of its vehicles. Post-production vehicles are distributed to, out to buyers across the U.S. The site they are considering purchasing is approximately ninety acres at the grounds at Concord, the former Philip Morris campus. Address there is twenty-three, twenty-one Concord Parkway South, Concord. They will be utilizing an existing warehouse on site and will be constructing additional space. The projected investment is estimated to be thirty-five million in real and personal property. Their plans include the creation of three hundred and four full-time jobs within the first three years. Average wages of those three hundred and four jobs will be forty thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars annually, which is above our current county average wage. In addition to the three hundred and four jobs that they have committed to create, additional jobs are planned in the following years as well, for a total of four hundred and sixty-nine jobs by year five of operation. The Cabarrus County Grant Analysis is based on the estimated thirty-five million projected investment in real and personal property. We are asking for your consideration of a three-year, eighty-five percent economic development grant. The estimated grant for the three-year term is six hundred sixty thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. The net revenue to the county during that grant term is one hundred sixteen thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. Their final location decision is contingent on the approval and award of state incentives. Would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Samantha?
Oh, I'm sorry, did you have something? Let me go ahead, just for the viewing audience, Samantha, and the high importance of that site there in Cabarrus County, you know, the former Philip Morris plant, which employed thousands of people, been gone for quite a while now, and the owners of that property obviously are breaking it up. And I don't know if you have anything prepared. I know, obviously, there's a lot going on out there. You had a lot of interest on what's going on. Maybe you or Robbie can sort of help me inform the public of how the company intends to do that, because, I mean, I got an email today of somebody, you know, saying that, you know, that that's all we was going to do on the site. Well, there's a lot of locations on that site, because you might say how many acres it is and how they're going to break it up, just for the viewing audience.
Sure. There's approximately twenty-one hundred acres north and south of Highway twenty-nine. So Project Wavy Carvana, they're only looking at a small portion, ninety to a hundred acres. We looked at that earlier today, and it's about four percent of the total campus at the grounds at Concord that they would be, they would be purchasing or utilizing if they, if they so choose to locate here in Concord.
Absolutely. And another thing to keep in mind, you know, with a site that huge, that with, when, at the peak, Philip Morris may have had maybe somebody know better than I do, but maybe thirty-five hundred or four thousand employees, maybe, could be more, could be less, but that was for the whole site. And so the way that they're doing it, you may end up with twelve or fifteen or twenty different employers on that site, or maybe even more. I don't know, depends on what each particular entity would be requiring. But you figure, though, if it's ninety acres for this site and it's three hundred and four jobs, well, it wouldn't take but just a few to overcompensate what we had with Philip Morris.
Absolutely.
And as far as jobs is concerned. And then, of course, you know, there's a lot of benefit to the county to have that place revitalized again, and put to a useful use, not only for the citizens of Cabarrus County, for places to work, but also for the revenue coming into the county, because that will help keep our taxes low by more coming in. And I appreciate the Economic Development Corporation, Robbie and yourself and Paige back here, you know, for your efforts to bring people, entities into Cabarrus County, because when they do, as I said, it helps us keep our taxes lower. So thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
So Samantha, this is not a location where people are going to come to buy cars, correct?
No, that's correct.
Right, okay. And it's kind of in the back, not towards the front of the property, if I?
Yes.
If you're familiar with the tobacco warehouses that were in the very back corner, they have taken down all but one of those warehouses, and that is the site that they're going to be using.
Great. Any other questions? Okay. Hearing none, we have advertised a public hearing on this project as well, so at this time, I will open the public hearing and invite anyone to the podium that would like to speak on this project.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
As I hear to my ears, jobs is what we need, and Philip Morris, the place, it'd be a good idea to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, hearing no one, we'll close the public hearing. And Commissioners, what would be your pleasure on this proposal?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve an economic development agreement, three years, eighty-five percent between, what, we need, what's the proper name?
Carvana LLC.
Carvana LLC in Cabarrus County, and to authorize the county manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the board, subject to review or revision by the county attorney.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? I think it's really important, some of the, some of the facts that Commissioner Schu brought out, that this is about four percent of the total property out there. So we have lots of other opportunities coming along. I think after five years, they project four hundred and sixty-nine jobs. So if the other ninety-six percent of this property came anywhere close to that many jobs, we would have a substantial number higher than we've had before. So it has a lot of positive things in both directions. Are there other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you. Okay, we move now to, you have various reports attached to your agenda as well, and at this time, we'll hear general comments from board members or updates on boards and committees that you serve on. Yes, ma'am.
I have a report from the Senior Center Advisory Council. September is Senior Center Month, and the theme is "The Key to Aging Well." So a lot of activities going on, paddleboat races, miniature golf tournament, sun catcher craft at Mount Pleasant Senior Center, ice cream turnoff, and many more. Also, a matter of balance is the fall prevention program offered in a four-week series of classes. So if you have interest on that, you can contact Michael at the Senior Center. The Moon Glow Cornhole Doubles Tournament will be held Tuesday, October first, at six p.m. at the Concord Senior Center. And then the Senior Games are in the process of going on, and the Cabarrus County is hosting for the fifth consecutive year, the North Carolina Senior Games State Finals Pickleball Tournament. So I want to make you aware of that in October. If you would like to volunteer to help out with that, they're definitely looking for volunteers. In the Senior Games, there are fifty-five participants registered to compete in North Carolina Senior Games State Finals. And then twenty-four seniors participated at the two thousand nineteen Senior Games in June and brought home three gold medals and three bronze medals. So if you have any interest in any of these activities, if you go to www.cabarruscounty.us backslash ALP or backslash seniors, you can get lots of information on these, as well as other activities that are going on. It's a very active place, as I say all the time.
Thank you. Okay.
I'd like to thank Paige, who was here with us tonight with the EDC. Paige was very kind enough to arrange a tour for myself and some coworkers of Fly Right, a very successful business here. Not only, and I would encourage any, any of you that are interested to talk to Paige about going on a tour. They provide flight simulation services. Not only do they have a phenomenal facility and all the property that's in there that's very important for us when we look at economic incentives, but they are a huge driver in tourism with the number of hotel rooms they get. They have had someone from every continent except for Antarctica, really cool map, all over the world that come there for training and come back on an annual basis and refer their other pilots to come. We got to sit in the seats, which were kind of interesting, and buzz over a few airports and hope that the simulator survived our fun that day. But it's amazing what they do out there. It's one of those businesses that if you go to Concord Regional Airport, you might see it, but you wouldn't have any idea what they do in there, and they have room for a couple more simulators, which I encourage them to go ahead and do their investment in and speak to us about those when they do those investments. But it's just really, a really cool facility, really, really nice people, and they want to be involved with West Cabarrus High School's Academy of Aviation that will be opening next year, when that school opened. So it was a really good connection, and so I have to make sure the boss knows that Paige did great by arranging for the meeting. And I told them that I would make sure that I thanked them for their, they spent two hours with us. So it wasn't like we just came in briefly and they ran us out. They spent two hours of their time, three different employees and some other ones that came in and out to make sure that we really understood what they were doing there. So thank you to Fly Right, a great business in Cabarrus County, and thank you to the EDC for everything that you do. I've told you before, I think y'all do a fantastic job of connecting businesses to Cabarrus County and finding them a home here. And they were all very happy to have this as their home, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a couple things to say about my liaison position, that is with the Central Atlanta Council of Government, and we've been real active in that for quite some time. We got a new director earlier in the year, and she's sort of revitalizing things and bringing it back to a life. bringing it back to a life. Not that it was dead before, but it's really coming alive now. When you start talking about economic development, growth, and the Central Lina Council of Government serves a community of nine different counties here in central North Carolina. And some of the things that they're working on now is, which is a number-one priority for the region, and that is a transportation plan, a regional transportation plan, to help unite people with their jobs and help people to get from A to Z, to B, you know, all the things in between. And it would really be great if somehow or another, we, over the next coming years, can develop a regional transit plan and get the funding to go along with it. Because that's always a big issue, you know? You've got good plans, but you've got to have the funds to make it happen. So, that's one of the good things there. And another little thing that I'm really excited about is, you know, we're always talking about jobs, 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 jobs. That's the name of it, you know, having places to go for our people. And they don't have to travel from without of the county. They can travel here, close to home where their families are. But I was talking to the county manager and these little cards here, it's been placed in the library and it's something that Central Lina Council of Government does. And it's called the Central Lina Career Headlight. And what this does is it helps to connect people that are looking for jobs, to find a placement for themselves, based on their skills, the salary that they're looking for, and what kind of career they're wanting to have. And so, the website for that, so if you do want to go and see, you know, what's on there, and it's very user-friendly, it's www.centralina-career-headlight.com. And I'm wondering, Mike, if we can get something like this on our county website to help people, I mean, can we get this on the website some way? Or is it already on there?
It's on the library. It should be on the library, access to it through the library's website.
Okay, because, I mean, where there's jobs, and there's a lot of jobs available right now. Matter of fact, you know, I'm not sure we could fill all the jobs. And then, with all these new employers coming in, you know, it's just like everything else, it's getting more and more competitive. But if you can make so much more money at this location than you can that, because I don't know anybody, I don't know anybody, and if you do, it'd be the first that goes to work every day for their health. We go to work to provide for our families and to provide a good living to support our family, you know, and that kind of thing. But it's, this career headlight is something I'm real proud of. And so, if you go to the county website, look under libraries, and there'll be something there relevant about this that'll help you go find your next placement if you're looking. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you.
Oh, incidentally, Cabarrus County is not only, not the only Cabarrus County member of the Central Lina Council. We also, as recently as this month, Concord City Council, they joined. And of course, the town of Midland's been members of the Central Lina Council for quite some time as well. So, there's a lot going on there and I look forward to seeing some more good news coming our way real soon. So, thank you all.
Thank you. We appreciate your service on that board. Are there any other updates or comments, or general comments by board members? If not, we do have need of a closed session tonight. So, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation and economic development as authorized by North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3 and 4.
So, moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. And we are now in closed session. We appreciate everyone joining us tonight.